We're gonna turn it over to Brian. I'll let him introduce himself, Josh. I think anybody who are new to the Utilities Commission, you're new to these, I mean, city council.
Yep. I had to change emails with Mark before, so. Well, as I was pulling that up here, I'm Brian with S D H. You're talking about the Quiet Zone Assessment. And I've talked to, like Trevor said, with the Utilities Commission. We'll just flip through this and then answer any questions as we go here. Well, while this goes, we can talk a little bit about the Quiet Zone process. It's a, it's definitely a process dealing with F R A and railroad and MINDOT and also Crow Wing County as well. When you throw all the entities in there, they, it became, becomes a bit of a process to get through this, so.
Brian, what is the F R A?
The F R A is the Federal Railroad Administration. So they're, they're the federal agency that oversees the Quiet Zone process. So with that, there's a code of federal, code of federal regulations that lays out the steps that has to, we have to go through for the Quiet Zone. What we've done here is kind of the pre-process. Part of what the railroads and the F R A like to see is a diagnostic meeting. And that's what we've held up here with. We had representatives from B N S F, F R A, MINDOTs from the rail side and from the traffic side, Crow Wing County, city staff, and then we were also there to document that. And that's really the first step in this whole Quiet Zone process. And that's to review each of the crossings, existing conditions, determine if there's any safety upgrades that are needed, and then to document that. And that, that's what we have done here with this assessment here so far. So that was back in November that we, we did that, had a pre-call with that group. Then we did site meeting in early November with everybody as well. So we, we documented what we've got out there. In the F R A database, each crossing has its own individual inventory number. And that, if you go on the F R A website, you can pull that up. Each crossing has all the information in there from a traffic standpoint, from road and rail, along with the, the other features of it, whether it's got gates or arms and medians and all the other information that's used in there, so. So part of this Quiet Zone step here is F R A has a calculator on their website where you put in the information that is pertinent to the crossings. So they have. Let me zoom here. If you hold down towards the bottom, it'll pop up. There it is. Alright, so first step in the Quiet Zone process is determining the, the risk score for each crossing. And that, that information comes through the F R A website. And it spits out a number for each crossing. And since we're going to do a Quiet Zone over all of our crossings here in town, we take a few of that and then our Quiet Zone Risk Index becomes an average of that. So you do that for the existing as it sits right now and also for the proposed. So we looked at two different scenarios on the proposed side that we'll get into, but really it's just an average across the crossings. And then we can claim a Quiet Zone for all of the crossings out there.
Do all of them have gates?
Currently out there, yes, they all do. And so the, so we came up with this risk score based on the existing conditions. There's a nationwide significant risk threshold. That's an F R A number that gets audited every year. This number changes annually based on, it's an average across all the crossings across the, across the country. And then there's this number here, the Risk Index with horns. That's also part of that audit as well. These two numbers come from F R A. Those change annually. Part of the Quiet Zone long-term maintenance is going to be making sure that we don't fall outside of this risk index at some point, whether it, something happens with traffic at the crossings, something changes from a physical standpoint, whether a median gets removed or something, there's an accident there. There's a couple of different things that could happen that would push us outside of that, but.
Can you just explain that to me? In my mind, the risk index, you want it to be low.
Correct. And that is what we want. So what we're showing right now is that the way the crossings are currently configured, we do not qualify for a Quiet Zone. So the current configuration. So we have some proposed improvements that we would require to get to that Quiet Zone. So we've, we've done some of these where, where this Quiet Zone Risk Index is less than the nationwide risk threshold. So you can just file a proper paperwork. You don't have the construction to do. And you can just, you can just move right into the next step. But we have an interim step here where we will need to do some construction out there. We've, we've got that included in the cost estimate at the end as well. We'll flip through the figures here. So starting with Timberwood in the west. So there's a couple of things with this one. We had, so one of the big ones that F R A and B N S F look at is the height of the medians. So one of the safety measures is to have a non-traversal median is what they call. So basically it has to be at least six inches tall. And what we've found in some of our diagnostic meetings and what F R A has found in their inspections is that some of these curves didn't actually get poured at six inches tall. We've got a couple of instances out here that, that we have to deal with that. And this is one of them here at Timberwood where we need sixty feet, the minimum sixty feet here that's at least six inches tall. We're shorting that on the north side. So we, we would have to tear out some of the curb gutter and replace that and make sure that's at least six inches tall. The other one at this crossing is, that came up in the diagnostic meeting. When B N S F and F R A talk about safety, it's about safety consistently throughout the time. So this pedestrian crossing that we have here is different than what is at Cypress and was proposed at Inglewood. So this is just a crosswalk. They've got truncated domes at the crossing and just stop signs. There isn't signal arms for pedestrian crossings. So this was one of the topics that we've, we've discussed a couple of different times. If what do we do with this trail crossing? Is this something that wants to be upgraded to match what is currently at Cypress and what's going to be at Inglewood? Or long-term is this trail crossing needed from the city's standpoint?
Yeah, should it be, when we talk about Utilities Mission, should we just tear it out for now?
Yeah.
Being we're not using it?
Yeah.
In order to meet the Quiet Zone standards, tearing it out would be the cheapest option.
Yeah.
Does it jeopardize the rest of, when I read it, it looked like the, it's based on points. That would subtract some points if we still need.
So if we would leave Timberwood out of the Quiet Zone calculation, we would still meet the Quiet Zone threshold. It gets us closer to the threshold, but if we would leave Timberwood out, we would still meet the Quiet Zone threshold. So, and we had discussion with B N S F as well following the Utilities Commission meeting. And if we were to remove the trail, they would come in and pull the crossing panels here so that somebody couldn't come up on the grade and go across there. And in the future, if you would want to reinstate or reinstall a trail here, they require another agreement and cost at that point to do that work, so. And with all of these, we've got signs that'll be along Highway 210 to warn the, of the crossing and the Quiet Zone as well as part of the process. Move on to Highland Seating Drive, Seating Road. Same thing with this one. We have the islands here, especially the south one that is too short. That one got cast right on the, on the base there without a gutter pan on it. So the Batuminis one that they paved came up a little bit higher than that one. That one's always just, those types of islands are always a struggle. So one thing that we made sure with Inglewood is that the island that's proposed there is going to be an eight-inch-tall curve. So we don't have that issue long-term. So there is no question that it's more than six inches, so. For this one, we would have some extension to that median would be needed. When I mentioned the sixty feet, that would be if there is something limiting us to going all the way out to the hundred feet. So we'll see that at, at the next one down by Costco there. That, that median only has to go to sixty feet because we've got the cross street that, that limits us to all the way out to the hundred, so.
And you have to extend it on the north end to just move the.
Correct. We need just a little bit of the north end. That sixty feet is measured from the base of the gates to the end of the full height median. So we're, we have to be very sensitive during construction to make sure that that taper isn't longer than we have a full six inches very close out at the end there. We'll see that on Cypress. That was one item that happened late that we have to deal with there as well, so. So in the F R A and B N S F's eyes, the best safety measure is to close the crossings. So with the work that's going on with Inglewood, the closure here at Inglewood is a big boost to our Quiet Zone scores, so. And this is the plan at Inglewood. Just a couple of items here that we're, we're addressing is adding the signs on 210. Those will get done when the Quiet Zone is enacted. So those don't get added in with the construction. In the near term, it has to happen once we, once we get the official notification that the Quiet Zone is, is approved, so. You can see here also we're knowing the eight-inch-tall curve medians too. And here's the, that Elder. We'll extend this one down to the crossing. We have a little bit of work to do here as well and then extend this up to the sixty feet. And part of this, the plan here with the Quiet Zone, and we've talked with F R A about it as well, the big reason to do this at one group of crossings to make the Quiet Zone versus doing individual crossings as Quiet Zones is this one right here. At 371, for us to meet their requirements for the, they call it the supplemental safety measure, which is the full height curb gutter is really what they're looking for. And we can't do that at 371 because of the restrictions that MINDOT puts on us because it's a stick. So this becomes the, kind of a hassle from the Quiet Zone side. We'd have to do an alternative safety measure which requires some additional documentation, additional notifications, longer review times by F R A as well, and more frequent reviews long-term. So by saying that we're not going to do any improvements here, we can avoid some of those extended timelines as well. So there's a strategic move on our part here in long-term. There's going to be hopefully an interchange here as well. So there's no point from the city's standpoint to, to spend money at this, at this crossing, so. Because you, there's lots of stuff going on here and with MINDOT and B N S F, it's just best if we can pass over this one and leave this as it is. And we were so close to getting this one perfect here at Cypress, but like I mentioned, it's, we're too far from the center line of the track with this median to the full height curve. So what happens, they've got a taper. So you start at the crossing level and then slope up to the top of the curve while the median taper take further distance to get to the full height. So what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to slope that concrete up a little bit quicker. It is a very small number that, that that was missed by. It actually came up after a second inspection by F R A. It wasn't nowhere during the diagnostic meeting, so.
Got to find something.
Yeah, and this entrance here is just barely outside of the Quiet Zone limits then as well, so. That got placed as much as close as we could get into the crossing without causing issues from the Quiet Zone standpoint, so. But here you can see the, what we've got for pedestrian tree, but you can see the signal arms and such, which would match what's at Inglewood. And that's kind of the topic discussion there for Timberwood is that, or if that is planned for in the future. So we'll go back to the proposed calculations here. Like I said, we, we did it two ways here. So a Quiet Zone including Timberwood, Noelwood closing, that's basically a zero on risk score, which helps us tremendously. And then the couple of modifications that we're making gets us good scores on the S S M side and brings that, those risk scores down significantly from mid twenty thousands to six thousand now for Highland Seating Road and Elder Drive. Like I mentioned, 371 stays as it is. Timberwood is included in this one with the construction modifications like we talked about, doing the curb gutter on the north side. Inglewood, we're currently having an estimate in here, since it's not officially in the F R A system yet. We had to make an estimate based on similar traffic level and the gate configuration. And you can see we're fairly confident we'll be somewhere in that six thousand range just because we're very similar at Elder and at Highland Seating as well, so. And then for some reason, F R A has Cypress Drive listed incorrectly in their database. So that is one item that we're working with F R A trying to get cleaned up too. But you can see with Timberwood in there, like I mentioned, it's an average. So our score comes in at twelve thousand six hundred, which is less than the nationwide significant risk threshold, so. Good. Then all the same numbers in the table, not including Timberwood, and we're at fourteen thousand. So it gets us closer. Like I mentioned, this is some, these two numbers are audited annually by F R A and they move around. I don't have the numbers for the last couple of years, but they're somewhere in this ballpark. So when we go to submit the Quiet Zone officially, we'll definitely be aware of where we sit with this number because by then we'll have an actual Inglewood risk score. We don't anticipate it's going to push us over it, but it, we're, we're close enough to a point right now that it's something we have to be aware of when we get to that point, so. Then on the cost side, we've got construction total. We've got an estimate in here for what it would take to put in a signal there at Timberwood if that option is chosen. And like I mentioned as well, is with the agencies, we're going to have permitting for B N S F to do the work in there right away. We have made that permitting regarding the signs that we need to put on 210 and also the work at Highland Seating Road there in Congress 48. And then the last line here, the N O I and N O E. So like I said, the, the Quiet Zone study that we have is kind of a precursor to the Quiet Zone official part. So the N O I is the Notice of Intent. And that is basically taking this document, adding in some additional information regarding the crossings. That's just standard stuff that we package up into a formal report or request. And then that gets sent to the road authorities, so MINDOT, Crow Wing County, goes to the railroad, so it'll go to B N S F and also go to F R A. And they've got sixty days to comment on that. We take those comments back, respond to them if there's anything that needs to be responded to. We do our construction piece. And then after that, the N O E is the last piece that, which is what goes to the establishment. That basically says, we've done everything we said we're going to do in the N O I. And, and that gives the railroad twenty-one days to, basically says that our Quiet Zone was in effect in twenty-one days. And then we put our signs up at day twenty-one, so. The shortest we've seen this process would be the sixty days plus the twenty-one. I think we did one at Rogers in like a hundred and ten days, the quickest that we've been able to pull that off. So the extended period here is very common in Quiet Zones because there is a lot of stuff that goes into it, especially when we're tying in construction for New Cross and, and these other items here to, to get to that point, so. And then one item that we added after the, the Utilities Commission meeting was with the Quiet Zone, F R A is requiring a letter. Their guidance is two to five years. They require a letter basically saying that the, the safety measures that we installed, that we identified in the Quiet Zone, N O I and N O E are all in place, functioning properly. So we've got basically a biannual cost of two thousand dollars to do that inspection and write that report to document that.
If they change their specifications, does that make us change these in the future?
There is that potential. So the, that is part of what that biannual inspection is to review that and make sure that that national risk threshold has been changed toward a, pushes up. So there is that risk and, and we've, we have had clients that have had crossings get kicked out because of that.
Because why?
Usually it's a traffic related.
Traffic.
Yes. Either a couple of road traffic issue or rail traffic issue. So some of the crossings that didn't have signal arms, especially when the big traffic with B N S F going across Minnesota and North Dakota when that happened here ten years ago. That was, there was a couple that got voted out at that time, so.
Got the same thought. They've got seven hundred thousand when they come to Dallas. Can't do anything you can't do. Well, we've already spent. One of the last statements of all the reading.
We've already spent significant amount of money pushing this trajectory out. So unfortunately, unfortunate what we put in the ground wasn't correct.
In looking at our calculations on the proposed, if we include Timberwood in there, really the big one in here, and you can see it pretty cleanly, is 371. That's the one that, that caused the, the Quiet Zone Risk Index to go up, so.
But if that, if that one area fails, can that be fixed or is the whole shebang go up?
It would be the, so like I said, we're using the average of the risk scores to get us to that Quiet Zone. If one pushes us, pushes that average above the risk threshold, then yes, the whole Quiet Zone would need to get reassessed or some, 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 something would need to change to that to get us back under that number.
Is it completely non-feasible to pull 371 from this?
Only if you pull Cypress as well. You can do the Quiet Zone from Timberwood to Elder.
Yeah.
You could do a different zone. But then you'd have to pull Cypress up too because they don't want you to skip over and then have another one. Your zone is kind of your zone. Because as I understand, I mean, Brian, you can explain maybe a little better. But you can set up, there are several bigger cities that have several zones in their city, not the entire railroad in their city.
Yeah.
So 371 right now, is there pedestrian crossings there?
No.
I didn't think so. So about all that could change there is traffic counts.
Yeah.
And they aren't going to go down, so.
So at that point, if 371 were to cause us to go outside of the Quiet Zone risk threshold, there are some things that could be done. It would require, like I said, it, it pushes us into the realm of the alternative safety measure, which requires an extended review from F R A. But that would entail probably adding some delineators across the island, both north and south. I think those were probably the big ones that were discussed there.
What do you mean by delineators?
So same thing as well is that Elder.
The gang crossover.
Yeah, the plastic posts that are mounted to the concrete there. In F R A's eyes, they're not as good as a non-driveable concrete median, which, yeah, they get run over, they get hit by snowplow, there's maintenance associated with them.
But they are an upgrade. You get some credit for an upgrade.
Yeah.
So that lowers that risk factor.
Correct.
Rather than the plan that you go show us that we're going to be discussing. But the comments come on quite a bit. Trevor, well, will that enhance us or make it worse or better or, or nothing?
If an interchange goes in, then there can be no railroad crossings, so the sixty thousand, and the sixty thousand goes one hundred percent away. And now we're way below.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, it actually helps us if the interchange goes in long-term. And that's where, that's why I had them do Timberwood the way we did. Is if you leave Timberwood in right now and don't do any improvements, that we still meet it, but barely. Which then in our back pocket, if something else would come up, all we'd have to do is go out there and take the trail out and put that median in at a later date. And now we bring that factor down. And that's why I wanted to run the numbers both ways. We could save the money right now on construction out of Timberwood, still meet the requirements. But then in our back pocket, two, three, four years down the road, if something else comes up and we, we're out of that national average, then we can go back to Timberwood because that trail's about, that trail's going to be twenty years old. Do we really go out there and replace it anyway, or should we just tear it out now? What's the long-range plan of getting that trail connection, you know, north of 210 or all the way down to Mapleton Road, you know, for, for an area-wide trail for our citizens? It's in our long-range plan, but I don't see it for fifteen, twenty years unless the development really picks up all the way to town.
So that cost estimated is, is that two hundred and fifty thousand? Part of keeping the trail?
That's to keep the trail and put signal arms on the trail and to upgrade the median on the north side of the tracks is the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so the cost estimate, estimate is not something we're actually considering right now at that full price.
I wouldn't recommend it.
For a trail with no traffic on it.
I don't think it pays to put signal arms on that trail, right? I don't think it pays to put signal arms on that trail. I'm, I'm really mixed. I mean, I've talked with, a little bit with Josh and Brad behind the scenes. What's the future of getting that trail connected? Should we just tear it out? And then, and that cost, I don't know if you've run the numbers, what's the numbers of just tearing out the trail and upgrading the median? You know that, Brian, off the top of your head? So it ain't a full savings of two hundred and fifty if you run it in there, but...
No, there's probably thirty-five, forty thousand in the medians and trailer removal.
But right now, we're, with the numbers come out, we don't have to do anything with Timberwood or three seventy-one, and we meet today's requirements.
Oh, so we wouldn't even have to do thirty-five to forty or...
Right now, if we wanted to proceed, we would be at, at that five hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand. Take the two hundred and fifty off of the seven hundred, we'd be at four hundred and fifty thousand. We would do nothing at Timberwood and we would do nothing at three seventy-one. What the utilities commission was weighing up is what do we do when we fall out of compliance down the road? We keep Timberwood in our back pocket and then also hope that the interchange goes in in the next five, ten years at three seventy-one and two ten, because then, then we'll probably never have a problem ever meeting once three seventy-one is done.
Yeah.
Then we wouldn't have that risk factor. We're going to fall out of compliance and then have to do more upgrades.
Good question, Mr. Council. Four, four hundred's better than, it's better than seven hundred.
My, my question is, is where is the kind of just a consensus on, is, do, do you still want to proceed down this path for twenty twenty-three to get the quiet zone in place in Baxter? Then what we would do is go back and look at the finances and see how, how we make it work at this four hundred and fifty thousand and how would we make it happen?
No, Mary, you said that there's been a lot invested already. When you say a lot, what, all from, what you...
Well, we've, we've already done a lot of work at Highland Seating. We're doing work at Inglewood.
I thought you were talking about Dollar Mount.
I have no idea what the Dollar Mount is, but I know we've spent a lot of money on it.
We would have not had to put the, the arms in on any of the trail crossings, so that alone on all three trails that we've got right now, which is Inglewood, Cypress, and County Road forty-eight or Highland Seating. That right there is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment that the city did getting ready for the quiet zone, so. I would think that we're probably between one point two and one point five million that we've invested to date that we would not have to do if we weren't going to go down the path of quiet zone in our city. Yeah, if we want to stop now.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that.
It's been, it's been talked about by our residents for years, you know, over in your neighborhood there. I haven't built it a few years ago and the train is going through there, it's not talking. We're going through there. And it's, I really think that our people want this, that's my personal feeling.
And maybe, I mean, we go back and look at the budgets, maybe it has to be pushed to twenty twenty-four. We know that Inglewood Drive is not going to be done probably until September next year, twenty twenty-three, somewhere in that timeframe, we're going to have it switched over from Knollwood to Inglewood. So if that's the case, I mean, put it off maybe one more year, the end of the world either, the budget's still going up, so. Just throw that out until we look at the budgets and see where we're at.
Well, we may want to spread it out over a couple of years. It's not like we have to do it all in one year.
Correct, we have it so far.
Yeah.
Have a consensus, people?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. You have time for others?
Absolutely. Absolutely. As, as council is fully aware, back in two thousand eighteen, the city entered into an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to preserve the houses that were part of the Cypress Drive improvement project in two thousand eighteen. That, that agreement or partnership with Habitat for Humanity resulted in, in five new affordable houses, three of which were moved from the project site to stick though. Recently, we, a step was approached by Habitat for Humanity in, to talk about four tax forfeit lots that they are considering for future home builds. The organization has requested the city to consider entering into a similar agreement to the one that was executed in two thousand eighteen. In return for financial participation, Habitat would commit to building four houses over the next two years on those four lots. The outstanding assessment on those four lots is approx. forty-six thousand dollars. We've set time to talk about the merits of the request, and at the conclusion of discussion, we're seeking directive from the council on how you'd like us to formally respond to Habitat. Should you look or give us the directive to move forward with that? We would also be asking for directive to, or the approval to, or consensus to commence the administrative and legal work that's necessary to bring a formal agreement to you in the future. Say it in a nutshell.
Thanks, Council. I have no problem progressing forward on this.
No, I am all in a hundred percent.
Well, they asked, in his letter, he asked either full forgiveness or partial, and Jeremy, how does it affect us? Do we, do we have the, do we have the money?
Your Honor, Council, we do have sufficient funds within housing districts. Couple of them have our process of being decertified, must be certified, but similar to what we did with Habitat's arrangement, we would have the tip to be able to do that to, yes, if that's what you want us to do. Those funds then would then replenish the debt circles funds that we have, so it would directly benefit us in the sense that our debts are responsible, we replenish with those monthly taxes.
It doesn't jeopardize anything else, it's not a ledger.
No, it's, it's just a extreme that's available for one purposes for these kind of projects.
Council, we got the consensus to move forward here. Thank you. Anything else?
That is all.
Okay, I'll look for motion to adjourn, but we're going to motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
I will, I shall, I will careless.
I know.